Relative to the governor's state of emergency proclamation relative to tree mortality of unprecedented die-off of millions of trees caused by drought condition and resulting beetle infestations. Richard, I think you provide these pictures you want to say where they were taken. Richard?
Chuck, are you going to operate the machine? But it just so happens that I, through the, being first vice president for the California State Association of Counties, I was asked to go on a tour put together by PG&E of the Bass Lake area. So, the tour was on ground and by air, by helicopter. Other people on that tour were unit chief for Madera, Mariposa, Merced, Nancy Corporage, and I'm going to quote her a couple of things here with her permission. Susan Husari, who was the public member of the State Board of Forestry. She's got a background in park service and the U.S. Department of Agriculture/Forest Service. We had a representative staff member from the CPUC there, and then a lot of PG&E representatives as well as some of their contractors who went on the tour. Their whole point was to go through and show the devastation around the Bass Lake area, which is county-wise, on the flight, we looked at the areas of Mariposa, Okurs, Coors Gold, Bass Lake, North Fork, Shaver Lake, and really massive devastation. Most of the areas are 45% to anywhere from 80 to 90% of the trees that are dead. If you look at just this picture, you can obviously see the trees that are dead, but if you look, there are some trees with just white caps on them that may still be mostly green. Those trees, according to the personnel from PG&E who are in charge of their forestry division, are already dead. So, it's just massive devastation, what I would call catastrophic. So, I'll just go through some of these pictures. There appears to be swaths, but actually, a good portion of the trees in the forest are already dead. PG&E at this time is, 2013, they were logging 30,000 trees. Most of this is near their right-of-way to keep the areas clear for their lines, but since 2014, they've gone to 50,000 trees. 2015, they project that they'll have 100,000 trees logged. The mortality area is mostly in the 2,500 to 4,500-foot area. And the main problem is the bark beetle, the main predator that's coming in, and they said, "The big problem is the drought is causing the bark beetle to really gain ground because we haven't got those hard freezes that are required to suppress them." So, in a lot of cases, the bark beetles, instead of two life cycles, are going through four life cycles. And that came from the unit chief, Corporage, from CAL FIRE. So, it's very difficult to control them with the weather that we've had. What the governor calls climate change, I look at it as basically just a rough period we're going through. As one person on the tour said, "This is nothing more than we've had in the past. It's a big problem, but nothing more than the bark beetles have done in the past." I thought about that for a second, and I didn't want to get too aggressive, but I did contest that because even in the governor's resolution, he states, they state very clearly that this is devastation that we've never seen in the past.
You know, one other thing I'd say, Richard, I did salvage logging for a number of years, my brothers and I did. And one thing you learn when you see the dead trees, you can bet when you have that kind of massive attack, a lot of those trees, a lot of those trees that are left that are green are dead in their feet, and they'll be brown next year.
What they stressed on this tour is that everyone needs to play a role because there's U.S. Forest Service ground, that's the majority of it, but there is BLM, there's a lot of private ground. So, they want everyone to play a part in trying to be part of aiming at a solution. I know the governor has called together a special task force now. That task force, the first meeting will be on November 16th, from 1:00 to 3:00, at the State Capitol, and it's a closed task force at this time. I know CSAC will have a seat, RCRC will have a seat, as well as some supervisors, it appears former chairs of RCRC will be involved. We're not sure how this will grow, but they're looking at it to be solution-oriented. Along with that, the governor has issued a proclamation, and that proclamation has gone to Tom Bilzak, the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, where the governor is stressing the provision of federal matching funds authorized in the 2014 U.S. Farm Bill for insect and disease designated areas to augment the state resources. They're stressing deploying more technical assistance and program support of the Natural Resource Conservation Service, and they're stressing redirecting funding by the U.S. Forest Service to remove trees on federal lands adjacent to communities and expediting federal approvals of emergency actions on or nearby federal lands. Now, if this isn't enough for most people to think it's catastrophic and not just another ordinary cycle of infestation by the bark beetle, I think, really think people need to open their eyes, and even someone who went on the tour didn't quite get that. But if you see, look at trees like this where they're turning white on the top, they may be green. What they've indicated is it's akin to a person having their bone marrow taken out of their body. You're not going to live, in this case, these trees are already dead. There's, around the Bass Lake community, they're taking these trees down, very labor-intensive. They have to be careful not to impact the houses or human life in the area. So, they're having to do this with cranes and cut them and lift them down. But this is basically what the area looks like all throughout that community. The problem is, as the people in charge said, if they take these trees out this year, and if there's no further activity as far as suppression, or if the weather continues the way it is, their community will look just like this again next year. There's three different trees, as Supervisor Ornetto pointed out, the one tree is, what, a fir on the end, or what is that?
On the right, on the right is cedar.
Cedar, and then the other two are ponderosa pines. The one is clearly dead, the other is dead according to the forestry specialists in the area, that once it starts looking like that, it's already too far gone. And these are pictures, they pulled back some of the bark so you could see what the tree looks like underneath. There's the actual bore sites where the bark beetle goes in.
You know, actually, Richard, what those, if you don't mind what those beetles do is they go in there, you see those little, like, little trails. They go in there and they go in there and eat the cambium layer, and they make those, basically make tunnels all throughout the tree and around the tree, and what happens is, basically, they girdle the tree, and they cut off the tree's water supply with those little tunnels they make, and the tree can't pump up water, and basically, it just dies from that. And you'll find those, you find a tree that's hit like that, they'll have literally thousands of beetles in one tree, if not probably tens of thousands.
And I'd like to reiterate what you were saying, Richard. My husband has a master's degree in forest pathology, so he knows quite a bit about bark beetle. And he said, really, the only thing that can stop the bark beetle is water from the sky, you know?
Water from the sky is one thing, but they stressed that you need those hard freezes to really suppress the activity of the bark beetle.
Sure.
What I find interesting is what Mr. Heisenfeldt said earlier. You have state-appointed officials, similar to the two that were taken off the Board of Forestry because of their remarks or their action on the state responsibility area, but you have, in this case, one state official on the tour saying, "This is nothing more than anything that's happened in the past," and that bark beetles have been around forever, when in the governor's own proclamation it says, "Recent scientific measurements suggest that the scale of this tree die-off is unprecedented in modern history." So, I think his own appointees need to read the proclamation, including the cardboard members, where it says, "Whereas such wildfires will release thousands of tons of greenhouse gas emissions and other harmful air pollutants." It seems like the card members did not read that resolution, and they probably won't. And even if they do, I don't think it'll make much difference.
I was down in early June at Bass Lake with the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. I'm a board member, it sits on there, and this is a lot worse now than it was then in June.
Oh, I'm sure it is, and I'll bet you, Louis, next year will be a little bit worse than it is now.
They weren't even starting the tree removal down there amongst the cabin owners, I should call them houses, they're far beyond cabins down there.
Well, Richard, in our binder is a couple of actions from Mariposa and Madera counties, I believe, where they actually, you know, contribute, basically asked the governor for a declaration of emergency because of this. What can our county best do today to, what can our county best do today to essentially be a recipient of some of these funds and resources that will be spent on this issue?
Even if it's from the outside, I think we need to be working with CSAC, RCRC, with BLM, Forest Service. Look at this task force that's being established, look at what they're discussing, try to participate if it's allowed, even on calls, to go in and listen to what's going on, but try and get the minutes to figure out what direction they're going in. We have representatives from CSAC and RCRC that will be going to those meetings or participating, so we can give our input to them as far as direction. But we're looking for a couple of things. The governor has given a pseudo exemption on some of the environmental processes, and I think that's going to be lengthy to go through and determine exactly what that means, but...
But I see he also included exemption from bidding, bidding processes.
Right. So, there's a lot of good things in the resolution, the one thing it doesn't have is money. So, we need to follow the task force, we need to be advocating for more of those resources, as the governor said in his letter from Congress, to reallocate some of those funds to fire suppression or to tree removal, actually forest fire suppression.
You know, really what we're running into here, too, is a perfect storm. I would say, due to actions, and I'll be, I'll be nice, or maybe I won't, due to actions predicated on spotted owl and other nefarious schemes, we've lost a lot of resaw mills in these areas. And I've seen a big change in the demand for timber, there's not many mills left. Historically, a lot of us work around homes and these hazard trees, people would be charged, no charge, or they'd be paid for trees because there was mills and there was a market, and there was a mechanism to remove these dead trees, and a lot of resaw mills have been taken out due to actions that were spotted owl, I would say mainly, and other items. And so, what we're going to see now, a lot of these homeowners, rather than having somebody come in and say, "Hey, I'll take your trees for free," they're going to pay a lot of money. And a lot of this wood now, there isn't, there really is not much of a home for it, there's a few sawmills left. Like, there's one, there's one down, down south, I think it's Deucen, Sequoia Forest Products, I believe. And you have some SPI mills around here, but there's not many mills. And what's really tough now is, we had all these massive fire burns, the mills are basically chucked full of timber, burnt timber from their own land and other burnt timber, and I think a lot of this woods, it's going to be an issue how to get it out and pay for it before it pays its own way. And now, the mill infrastructure's gone, so we're importing wood from Canada, and we got a problem, and we don't have a real good method that I see to alleviate this problem.
They encourage local counties to work with their private landowners, and the problem is going to be money. Where do you get the resources to do this? Part of that's through the Fire Safe Councils and maybe some of that SRA money, but realistically, you know, you're looking at what PG&E takes out of the forest, 100,000 trees that are dead or dying, and I think one of the numbers I saw here were into the millions of bored feet of timber that, these millions of trees that need to come out. As Supervisor Ornetto said, the other problems PG&E is facing is whatever they take out, a portion of the lumber is not considered good because it changes color, but even then, they said, the mills are all at capacity. The biomass plants are short in number, and even our plant in Buena Vista is having a contractual dispute with SMD now, so who knows if they're going to be operating by the, past the end of the year. But there just aren't enough biomass plants in number, and even if there were, getting the material to those biomass plants is probably cost prohibitive. So, one thing in the governor's proclamation was setting up portable processing units and possibly reusing the material that's shipped on-site. It's going to be very costly.
Supervisor Boitano?
Yeah, as I stated earlier in the meeting, I met with this California Conservation Corps gentleman yesterday, and we were mainly talking about Aqua House, Molly Joyce Park, and they're suffering with this bark beetle up there, and she's concerned about the fuel loading in the neighborhood. So, basically, what he indicated yesterday that it would, if you want to get your ducks in a row and contract with them, and I'm sure it would be any other state agency to get stuff done, is you need a letter of support from CAL FIRE, CAL FIRE, and he suggested Tom Tinsley. And that would start the ball rolling to use SRA funds. He said, "You need a forester, you got to look at the fuel loads, you need pictures, you need a detailed scope of work, your fuel densities, what are you going to do with those fuels once you cut them down? Are you going to chip them, are you going to do burn piles, are you going to have clear around the burn piles?" He stated that the CWPP up in Butte County adopted a blanket sequa neck deck, and that's been very time-effective to help them move forward. And I was thinking a little later on that, you know, perhaps we can maybe use some of this carb money to get either tub grinder or chippers in to help, because there's a lot of property owners that are faced with this, and they have tree hazards right next to their house, ready to fall onto their houses, and they need help. And in the governor's proclamation, he was happy to drag in local government to help, but we need money, and we need to be able to access these SRA fees monies, and we need to expedite that and be able to do that judiciously.
I think what you're saying there is true. The SRA funds is, I think it's a big, it's a big source of money, and I think this is, if they want to put it to good use, this would be a good use. And maybe, I think we should send the letter, basically thanking the governor for his proclamation, and maybe inquiring if they could provide funds on maybe the cap and trade program.
Good point.
Or SRA funds, and also, I think we, the county, or the entity, our air board has some funding we could put forth, I think we have some dollars that we might be able to access to bring in some, like, some chippers or some type of program to help with this. We're not seeing a huge problem in this county yet, but it's, it's, it's starting.
I know we have people, I had a couple of calls yesterday, and I know Supervisor Morgan has been getting calls, and I know there's some people here that want to definitely speak to this situation. You know, everybody's going to have to work together. This is a real catastrophic problem. It has the potential.
We don't want it to sneak up on us, though, either, because unit chief Corporage stated that, in CAL FIRE pictures that they took in the Bass Lake area, Mariposa, they took pictures and went back two to three months later and took the same picture of the same area, and it looked night and day with the amount of trees that are dying. And I did find the one stat, the governor's press release, just to show you the numbers, PG&E is taking out 100,000 trees in that Bass Lake surrounding area this year. The United States Forest Service estimates that more than 22 million trees have already died in California. So, 100 trees compared to 22 million is just scratching the surface.
Yeah. You know, one of my callers yesterday, you know, the gal, the lady stated, you know, "Once I get the trees down, what am I going to do with them?" You know, they don't want them, obviously, they don't burn firewood, so that's a problem. What do you do with a mess? And so, it just is compounding problem after problem.
No, it is, and you know, it's like, it's up Buckhorn Ridge Road and up there, in that area on Buckhorn, and there's, you're seeing some areas where the broods and hatches are started taking off, and seen some pretty good-sized bug patches up there. And talking to foresters, and what they're saying is, you know, you're seeing down the Bass Lake country, but it's also, it's moving up, you know, the Mariposa up in the Tooney, Calaveras, and, you know, it gets less and less and less as you come this way, but it's moving this way. So, unless we have a real, real super wet winter, a really cold winter, we're having a pretty big issue, and probably will still have an issue to a certain degree.
Mr. Chair?
Because a lot of those trees that are green, and right now that are green, they're, they've got bugs in them, and next spring, they're going to, they'll be starting dying off.
Well, I like your idea, Mr. Chair, of writing a letter to the governor, saying, "We're on the list," even though we're, you know, I mean, I wouldn't say it that way, but, you know, let's acknowledge his declaration and say, "Please send money."
I think it was a good declaration, and I think we need to see if there's some dollars that we can put in our own, and I think as the governor, I'd say, "Hey, you know, maybe I can help you, but you need to put a few bucks in yourself."
We need to drag the federal government into this as well. And I would like, lastly, to say, I am concerned, there are a lot of senior citizens out there with this problem and don't have the means
That's right.
...to get this done, and we need to help them. This is what we're here for, after all.
That's true, and you know, one other thing to look at, it's not just the dead trees, that concerns me some, and expense of taking them down concerns me some, but what bothers me a lot is when you get this kind of die-off, if it starts hitting our county, and even other counties that are getting hit, I have my sympathy, because it's setting the stage for some just massively big, hot wildfires
Absolutely.
...two, three years down the road or more.
One of the frustrations I've had from callers, Louis, is that many, many elderly people that do not have the resources to take down the dead tree that's next to their house, but when you bring the federal government in, too, then a lot of times, there are income requirements, and I'll give you a prime example. A woman said she was sure she would qualify, and it was something like, "You can't make more than $17,000 a year," and because she sold crocheted and sold doilies or something, she made like $19,000 a year, and so she didn't qualify. So...
No, I understand what you're saying, but the only thing I said, the reason I brought this up about the federal government is they need to start throwing money at it
Right.
...and forget about the income criteria
Right.
...because this is going to be a real problem.
Yep.
You know, you could have catastrophic fires of unimaginable proportions if this keeps going.
You know, at this time, is there any members of the public that'd like to comment? I'm sure there's a few.
Today, my house is probably, my property is probably worth nothing, because if you want to come see what happened, the tree's just gone dead, you know, down through, can't imagine, right next to my house, pine tree. How do we get them out of there if we cut them down? So far, I've had 10 cut down, spent over $2,000. Luckily, pine, pine angel, or wood angels came and carried away the part of the pine that we had, but I can't get it out, I can't afford to get rid of it, it's going to just stay there and be a big fire hazard for, not for my property, but for Surrey Junction and every place around. So, I wish, rest upon the governor that we got to do something.
Totally.
Thank you for waiting around today, Mr. Rowell. I know it was a long morning and almost into the afternoon.
Hi, I'm Eddie Onetto. I'm shocked at these pictures, but yet again, I'm not. 25 years ago, we were doing a lot of salvage logging and have experience with removing a lot of trees around people's homes who couldn't afford it, and we ended up giving them a lot of money. But one of the problems I've encountered over the years, and got very discouraged by, is the amount of ignorance that we have in the public at large. We have an educational problem. We've been taught for the last 50 to 100 years that the Smokey the Bear put out all fires. This has come to us through great media, the Smokey the Bear campaign was wildly successful to a disaster. Yes, I understand we have a drought. This is not a normal situation, but this forest has seen these droughts before. We've had fires that we've never had before. Back in the power fire, I cut a tree that was only 32 feet tall and was 715 years old. That tells me that that tree, that's the worst fire encountered in 715 years. We have excluded fire from the forest, we've excluded grazing, we've encouraged wild animals like the mountain lion and the bear, and you say, "Well, what's that got to do with tree die-off?" A lot. The lion population has basically wiped out the deer herds in most of California here from what I can see. Go up to fishing, go up to the game reserve and drive through and see if you can find a single deer. I can't. So, we've had, the deer have had tremendous attack upon them, now we got brush coming up, the brush is taking away the water, so even if we hadn't had this kind of drought, we're going to come to this situation. Our tree density per acre should be 30 to 60 trees an acre. Our tree density is 1,000 to 4,000 trees an acre.
Probably varies depending where you're at.
It varies a lot. Historically, in places, and I just did a tour down south, they said it was in places they reserved where they haven't touched it in hundreds of years, it's 200 trees an acre. Really, that's counting every little thing, but really, your larger trees should be 30 to 50 trees an acre, and we now have 1,000 to 4,000 trees an acre. I believe the environmental community holds a key to curing this problem. It's a long-term problem, it's educational. We've destroyed our sawmills, as you've said, we don't have the same structure to do it anymore, to remove these trees. We've created such roadblocks like the, sort of control burn-up, the Forest Service, there's so much red tape, and there's so many requirements, they really can't control burn. If this, if this forest had been control burnt in the last 50 years and harvested, yes, you could have a drought, and we would not, we would not have this catastrophic event. I had no idea it was this bad, I've heard about it. So, I thank you, Supervisor Forester, I believe you brought these photos up, I didn't realize it was that bad. This could be in our own, our own community here. Really, we need to do two things, I believe. Federal government needs to help us with some money to bring in some infrastructure like sawmills, whatever. And I would like to see educational process reach into the community, particularly the younger kids, that we need to bring back for fire, harvest, and manage the forest, and not just, the mantra of "save everything" has really contributed in a large degree to this. So, we, most of you guys know the problem, I mean, the solutions are fewer than the problem is big.
The education component is huge. They said in, in that area, there's one individual who advocates against cutting any trees, and those trees that are part of the white cap, and even the trees that are clearly dead, the individual purports that just a little water will bring them back. Individuals need to understand that when they're dead, they're dead, they're not coming back, and to leave them in place just perpetuates the situation and creates more fire danger.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Eddie. No, I agree with you, Eddie, I think we need to get back good forestry practices, prescribed burning, and, you know, manicure are forced. Who, like the days of when Winton used to have their timber, I used to go out fishing at Blue Creek, and it was beautiful, the trees. The trees was, there was no underbrush, and they were spaced, and they were, once KLR got a hold of that property-
KKNR.
KKNR, that was about the end of that, but that's the sad part.
Cal Fire ended, or Cal Fire said that during this tour, the control burns are one method, but very difficult in this area, because there's so many houses, and you may not see them clearly in here, but from the air, there's houses everywhere. So how do you do your control burns without putting life and property at danger?
There's still areas that can control burn, especially in national forests, and I think as far as the fire danger, we're going to have to lobby and work to get control burns in some of these major canyons, especially where there's a lot of public lands or large parts of private lands. And that's probably not so much tree mortality, but just fire protection.
Well, you know, Supervisor Morgan and I met with Craig Ostergaard and-
Charlie Blankenheim.
Oh, yeah. Cal Fire, Chief Blankenheim was last week, and they've had a pretty successful partnership, public-private, and they've been doing these shaded fuel breaks for a number of years, and it's been hard for them, too. I mean, you know, you get to the point where it's not a burn day, and they need to burn this stuff, but thank God, they've been doing what they've been doing.
You know, Louis, I'm glad you brought that up, because I had a person a while back that was half irate, it's probably a couple of years, a year or two ago. They were mad about the burnt trees up on Fiddletown Road, and how dare SPI and Cal Fire do that? And I talked to them, so I was blue in the face, saying, hey, they may possibly save your home and your subdivision if a fire comes out of that canyon, they're doing what we need to do. They're doing control burning, they're doing thinings up there, and they're basically doing a big fire break for that whole area along, a big portion of the area along Fiddletown Road, and we need more of that done.
And we fast forward how many years, and it looks pretty nice when you drive by.
Looks beautiful, really does. You know, any more comments from the board?
I would say one thing, that if we're going to write a letter, let's tell the governor we support his proclamation of a state of emergency, and include some other language about the actual proclamation itself, that it's going to require a unified effort, and we're in support of that, but it's also going to require resources, lots of resources and money to solve the problem. I would also say nicely ask the governor to direct his appointees on state boards to support the initiatives that he's putting forward to resolve the, to help resolve the problem. And I'm directing this specifically at members of the Board of Forestry, but will be generic, I would like it put, but members of the Board of Forestry and the Air Resources Board, who did not include those wildfire emissions in their climate pollutant strategy. How can you be part of the solution if you're not supporting the governor who put you on the board? So he needs to get all of his appointees and staff members on board on this issue.
I think you're 100% right, Richard. And that's, that'd be good to have, include in that letter.
No, I agree with that.
Some good comments, I think we can, I don't have a problem including those.
I wouldn't mind a little paragraph or so in that letter stating, there are a lot of people without means to, on private property to have these trees removed, and so this really points to the need for funding.
And I think you can state it in such a way not to inflame, but to encourage.
Right. Absolutely.
So Chuck, are you writing that letter? Jennifer is.
I cumulatively will do that.
You know, I will say, the governor did do some good work and got rid of one person. I was talking to this particular person, and talked about these catastrophic fires, and the person basically chuckled and chortled with glee, and about how wonderful this, I was talking, I think this actor is the Cleveland Fire, burnt like 20 some odd thousand acres, a lot of old growth, you know, forest, and they said, well, this person thought it was really kind of wonderful, because there's plants that came up en masse that were kind of rare, and there's lots of them. And, you know, I thought, you know, you got, you got a lot of areas out there, these trees took four, 500 years to grow, and get that old growth type forest, and then got wiped out, and they were glags, a few plants came up. And that particular person, he did remove her, but I said, she wasn't on the Board of Forestry for a while, and I was just aghast when she said that. So, Richard, yeah, I hear what you're saying. And the governor, I guess, for whatever reason, she's gone, and I'm quite thankful. You know, I believe there's some members of public additional that may like to speak to this matter. Now's your time, any other members of public?
Mr. Chairman, I've purposefully withheld the comment up to now, but, you know, I think, I think somewhere we need to point out that we've addressed, and apparently the governor has addressed, what is termed a catastrophic event with this tree mortality and so forth. And yet, we find ourselves falling into the same old trap, that our solution, the solutions I've heard proposed here for us to do is write a letter and ask for more money, whether it be from the state or the federal government. And that is not going to solve. We have forests that are in a condition, to Mr. Eddie Onetto's point, that are there because of an adopted ideology to save everything, and in spite of all that attempts to save, we've got massive die-offs, we've got huge fire concerns, we're importing lumber by the millions and millions of board feet from Canada, when we could be harvesting it out of our own. And we've killed the profitability model that enabled that sort of thing to be done on a profitable basis and zero cost to the taxpayer, and to this gentleman's point earlier, that they could actually sell those dead trees that are on their property, rather than cost you $2,000 to fall them, and then figure out what you're going to do with the wood left over.
That's what I used to do, John.
I know it, I know it. And yet, we find ourselves here, we need more money from the state, we need more money from the cardboard, we need money from the feds. We'll write a letter and ask for it. We have got to get to the point to where people realize there's not enough taxpayer money at the state or federal level to fund an entirely unprofitable venture of thinning the forests, or manicuring the forests, or doing all these things that are nothing more than a cost. This government, this, the governor's proclamation here is all about chipping. Well, we've seen it ourselves here locally, that it is financially infeasible to pay for the cost of chipping and pay for the cost of trucking, to chip those, to ship those trucks and those chips to a biomass plant and generate electricity from it. It just flat doesn't pay for itself. But that's his solution. There's nothing in here about merchantable timber. There's nothing, nothing in here about replacing the imports coming into this state from Canada and other places. Instead, we're just supposed to store and/or chip all these things and attempt to create mulcher biomass energy. And it's farcical. And I'm sorry, I sit over here and I hear these solutions. One thing we can do to Supervisor Morgan's point-
Yes.
...is CWPPs. We have helped fund community wildfire protection plans to be crafted by our local-
Old age.
Fire Safety Council.
That happens with old age, by the way.
Yeah, yeah. And it was proposed, back when we were helping fund those things, to expand the wooies, the wildland urban interface areas around those communities, the very kind of expansion of a wooie, or the very kind of thinning project that saved Pine Acres in this Butte Fire. Had it not been for a wildfire or a wooie project, thinning project done down there and maintained over the years, we'd probably seen the Butte Fire in Fiddletown. But we didn't do it, because everybody loves those trees, and they don't want to thin those trees out or harvest those trees, even if it's around their own residences. I think they might think a little differently now, but for it to take that, to bring about a change in the thought process, to Mr. Onetto's point, an educational component here, and Brian, I know you've been beating the drum for a long time, if we don't harvest them, we're going to watch them burn. Our forests and our communities that are built in those wildland urban interface areas adjacent to our forests. So while I'm all for complimenting the governor on his proclamation here, needs to figure out that what government needs to do is get out of the way of the private enterprise that brings about a profitable model to getting these forests thinned, these elderly folks' trees that are dead, cut around their areas, and providing better fire protection throughout our state. I'm off my stump.
All right, thank you. I couldn't agree with you more, John. It was well stated. But right now, the thing that I'm worried about is these, the imminent danger around these homes, and with people that don't have the means to get them out of there, and I think we need to find a way to press forward that expeditiously as we can, because it's a serious problem.
You'd make a good, you'd make a good community activist, and who knows, right after that, you might be president. It's happened before.
But no, what he said is true, it's, that's where it was, my brother and I, it was our bread and butter, is we used to salvage timber, and a lot of it was around homes. There was one place called Grizzly Park Subdivision, and we were up there for a number of years, and people would say, hey, protect them, don't hit my house, don't hit my rose bush, don't hit my this, don't hit my that, and take the trees out. And now it's, the mills are gone, we've had so much fire-burnt timber shoved into our, due to poor forest management, so much fire-burnt timber shoved into our mills that they're chock-full of fire-burned logs, and it's ran the price of timber down, and now we've got this drought come along, and there's not a good mechanism for removing those trees.
And we've closed mills in Tuolumne, and we've closed mills in Amador, and we've closed mills in Camino.
Yeah, no, so it's-
You know, I agree with all your comments, John, that it'd be nice for government to get out of the way. You know, sometimes you've got to take what you can get and start taking baby steps, and at least you have a governor who may normally not think in this direction, at least having an epiphany, he's had those before. So at least this is a step in the right direction. I agree, we need a lot more to solve the problem. They indicated, Cal Fire indicated, the only way to take care of the issue in some of these areas is to clearcut it, because 70 to 80% of the timber is already dead. Is that going to happen? Well, then your clearcut is a bad word. So then you have to fight that battle.
Well, you know, it's all good and well to talk about all this stuff, but I still am concerned, what are we going to do here locally? Who's going to the task force meetings? You're past Chair RCRC, and you're going to be first president of CSAC, you're going to go, but I think we should have a local task force here to deal with it locally, so we can get this ball rolling, because my concern is the problems here in Amador County right now, and all the rest of that stuff will have to come and be dealt with, but we need to do something right here and now.
Well, the one thing that was said, in our area, the biggest partner on private is SPI, they need to be on that task force.
Absolutely. You know, it is a big issue. I do struggle with, is it our job to take dead trees off, away from somebody's house?
Well, the governor in his proclamation pointed to local government to be a partner. I don't know if it's our, his business to get into that-
The government's the solution for everything.
I don't know, yeah, I understand that, and, you know, I pointed that out very early on, when we've opened this session about this. But whatever it is, it has to take some form or another, and we have to get something done, because I don't want to see anybody lose their life with a tree falling through the roof.
Well, again, the expansion of the wooie areas, and John Hoffman told me once, and I'm hoping I'm quoting him correctly, but he's very knowledgeable about this, and maybe Ann and John can comment on it, but that under CWPPs, you can expand the wooie areas, it's, there's a boundary of X amount of miles, or feet, or whatever it is, around an urbanized area, and expand those wooies further out into the forest to be able to derive the efficiencies and lessened regulatory red tape that's, that accompanies doing thinning projects and so forth in those areas. So in other words, the bigger the wooie around the urban area, the better chance you've got to get that thinned with, with less red tape to have to jump through, so.
And that was especially, I think, like, that would really be beneficial to Forest Services, what it was, as far as the regulatory hoops they have to go through, that's what really came in.
Right, right. If they're doing a thinning project within a wooie, it's much less cumbersome for them to get that done than it is outside of a wooie. So expand on our CWPPs, greater wooies around these urbanized areas, and utilize some of that funding that we've had at the Air District to, to help bring about either the transport of this chipping or whatever, as one of the projects that we bring forward. I think that's two things we can do locally that'll help, help the homeowners most readily, and then we'll have to expand out into the larger forest from there.
Yeah, I mean, I think probably from my tenure on the board, that was one of the best things that I was ever involved with, was when we flew over and decided to do the shaded fuel break in Pine Acres. It paid off 14 years later in the Butte Fire, and they were able to not let it flash around that. So it was work well done, and, you know, it was huge.
That fuel break that probably saved pine growth, and that, you were in it, what, 14 years ago?
Yeah, and I think, like John said earlier, it would have went to Fiddletown, I think it would have went to El Dorado County if we didn't have that.
Oh, yeah. Well, thank you, Louis.
Not going north.
Direction of staff here is for staff to work on a letter to the governor?
Yeah.
Can I take a first crack at that and send it to Ms. Burns? I'm going to be leaving tomorrow for a couple of days, but if I could take a crack at it tonight and send it to her, and then the CIO and chair can review it after that?
I think it's something, that'd be fine, maybe other board members might want to take a look at it, too.
Yeah, send it to the clerk- Send it to the clerk for distribution to all of us, and allow for edits.
All right. Can we make comments, and maybe the board chair and the CIO can look at the comments and incorporate?
For the immediate hazards?
Wouldn't hurt us, we could probably look at it, and I'll wait.
I think it may be problematic for every board member to make edits along the way. I don't think it's a problem to review it, but if you want to make edits as a board, it probably would need to come back.
Could they make comments, and then like whoever's doing the editing, like?
I think that's the same problem.
That's the same thing.
How tight is it, how tight is the timeline on this letter needing to go out?
I'd say sooner's souter, rather than later, is better, be my thoughts.
So not enough time to make those edits, and then have the final version come back to our next board meeting?
We could bring it back to the 24th, meeting on the 24th.
I think we have plenty of time to do that. They're going to start their, they're going to start their task force meetings, but they're going to be receiving comments from here until the task force, it's their job, which is going to be quite lengthy, I think.
Okay, well, I can live with that, then. You've got two weeks.
And back to what I'm very concerned about, can we keep this on the agenda for discussion so we keep this thing moving, so we get some sort of remedy to help this situation?
Sure. Yeah, well, two weeks, we'll have it back next meeting, okay?
The letter has to come back anyway, but what about the thought of creating a local-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's where I'm at, too, I mean-
Want to take any action on that?
Can we, can we re-
That for you.
You lost me there. Local task force?
No, that was Supervisor Morgan-
My suggestion was that we need to keep this ball rolling, and if we have some, our board actively involved, I think it'll keep the ball rolling. This is a problem, and if we just write a letter, and the letter's the only thing done.
No, you have to keep on it, or it'll, it'll die.
Yeah.
Can you, can you invite the-
You need to invite the players, Cal Fire and-
And Kathy Kuz Brazil as the drafter of those CWPPs, and discuss the opportunity to expand those wooies.
Agree. Back to the conversation and continuing? You know, a question-
And maybe you can make that appointment, if you see fit, at that next meeting.
Question I'd have is, we could, we could do that at our next meeting, yeah. And also, I mean, is, the question I'd have is, could we have a forester expand those wooies? Like, we have John Hoffman under contract, and maybe he could, something maybe he could do, possibly?
Well, under the proclamation, it's supposed to streamline the SEQA, but as I talk with the- the CCC guy yesterday, he suggested blanket CEQA on the CWPPs was very helpful.
Yeah. That's a great idea. As long as it involves NEPA, too. I think that's the issue with anything on US Forest Service managed lands, is it all requires the national NEPA.
CEQA, NEPA.
And we have a local forester, I think, maybe willing to address the wooie issue, possibly. I don't know if it's in your scope of knowledge, John, but any help you give us, we'd appreciate.
John Heisenbuckle, registered professional forester. Expanding wooies, one thing. But the Board of Forestry, just a couple of weeks ago, modified their emergency rule. Harvest these trees now, dead and dying trees, without much red tape. So-
I'm glad to hear that.
Under an emergency rule. And when the emergency is declared over, you no longer have that.
It'll require more paperwork. But for now, what you're seeing in Madera County is coming our way. I mean, and me and the rest of the CalAM forestry team really pay attention to what's going on. And Buckhorn Ridge Road, Chairman Onetto mentioned it, take a ride on it. It's here. It's gonna get worse. Even if we get good rains this winter and hopefully really cold weather, it'll knock down the bugs, but we're still gonna see outbreaks next year. We need to treat the problem. And it is gonna take money. And one of the things the CalAM team is going to be doing is looking at grants from SRA funds, the illegal fire tax, to get back to the community. And I know we're... Mr. Plasse, you don't like taking money from the government, but they're taking it from us. Let's get the SRA funds back.
I know. I know that's the thinking. It's just not a sustainable model.
Yeah. And I understand that. But next year, it's gonna be critically important to get on the bug trees. And at a recent meeting with local foresters, Tim Tate, the lead guy for SPI in the area, let us know that SPI is going to make room next year to take in these bug trees. So there's some infrastructure there.
They'll try to help out, then, huh? That's good.
Yeah.
You know, one thing, you hit it so soon, because I know I fell a lot of bug trees in my life. And the sooner you tackle that tree, the safer it is. And the more you can do with it. You let it get rotten, you're looking to die and you can't do much with as far as taking it out.
You need to get them when they're just starting to be attacked. And we've actually gone through this before. In 1977 and '78, we had a drought and had a big bug problem in the county. And we sucked it up and had the mill when we had one in Martel, had to eat a lot of blue-stained timber. But we solved the problem. We can do it again, but we have to be aggressive about it. We have to cut trees.
John, it's a little bit different than that last drought, is, as far as the die-off we're seeing, especially down south?
It's lower in elevation this time. When '77, '78, it was more up country.
'76, '77.
This time, it's 4,000 feet and below.
John, could you keep Carolyn Fraguilla, our director of Agra, in the loop? She's interested in getting some done up at Molly Joyce Park. And we referred her to Kathy Kuz Brazil, if you would help with her and to achieve those means up there. And another thought I had is-
And actually, Supervisor Boitano, the CalAM team has-
Looked at that, huh? Yeah. I saw the report, yeah.
Okay.
The other thought I had was if SPI is interested in taking some of those bug trees, I know in the past, they've decked some of the stuff still at Martel. And they still have a great deal of property there. Maybe they could do the same thing.
Don't know the answer to that.
Yeah. You probably see more of them than I do, so.
Yeah. I don't see them doing that, because if you have bug timber, when you cut it, you have to get it to mill as soon as possible. Under sprinklers, you can't let it sit out or it'll just crack and go bad really quick.
Understand that. But if they don't have room at the mills they have currently.
You're right, though, John. That's why PG&E wanted to start this tour in the Mariposa area, because they said, it's in your area, but this is just to show you how bad it's going to get.
That will.
Pretty well beat this up. Any other members of public? Board?
So do you want to, at our next board meeting, appoint the actual task force? Or do you want to do that beforehand?
You know, I think we should probably appoint a local committee of supervisors now, probably two, I think, probably two supervisors.
To join with the CalAM group, or?
Ever you want to do it.
And again, you get so many different people doing the same basic thing. Let's work together.
We probably could work with them. Would like to be on that committee?
I would.
Okay. Well, you're one. Anybody else?
I'll sit on it, but I'm probably gonna be involved with that state committee, too. So maybe it's a good combination. We'll see.
Let me be the alternate if one of you can't make a meeting. Does that sound all right? Is that legal, Greg?
Should be fine.
Okay.
It's ad hoc, so. The committee will be Lynn and Richard and Louis will be the alternate. And we'll go ahead and we'll send a letter to... We'll work on a draft letter. We'll bring it back our next meeting for its approval. So-
Just remember on the letter that, you know, there's lots of things that I want to put in the letter that probably wouldn't be accepted very well at the state level. So I think you really have to moderate your tone when you're sending a letter to the governor and make it positive, show as much support as you can for what they're doing while pointing out some of the, maybe some of the inadequacies.
I think his declaration was a good step. And I was glad to hear that CalFire is relaxed regulations on trying to get out burnt trees. Because if you have to go through the whole process, you won't see it happen.
Supervisor Forester had volunteered to take a first crack at that. Is that where we left it?
Yes.
Okay.
With that, I think we have, we will have direction.